Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council Work Session for April 23. Welcome to everyone here at home. The first item up today is items of interest from the Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. I would give you my little list of things. I got to welcome the National Guard Association. I met with the ASUO students over that topic this evening. I went to the Breaking the Silence Anti-Bullying Gathering at the University of Oregon. Then we had the We Gene Celebration where we recognized our neighborhood associations. And hard, I have to say this or Michael would get me, but it's very hard to choose which is the best neighborhood association to honor because they all need to be honored for the work they do. But the one they chose was the combination of River Road, Santa Clara Neighborhood Associations as to give special recognition to this year. I welcome the Delta, Kappa, Gamma Women Teachers, participated in Earth Day, and Babe O'Sullivan did a nice presentation at Earth Day, did the ribbon cutting for the new Moose Lodge today. I didn't know there were so many different Moose ties and things. Cheek was with me for that, it was a nice thing. And then I guess I should mention that we're going to have the, Betty is going to join me for the Mayor's One-on-One tomorrow at 5:00 at Rite Aid on 29th and Mulberry. Turn it over to you, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chance last Thursday to attend a Food For Lane County Board Meeting, which was really enjoyable. Their Dining Room Task Force just completed its work, looking at the downtown dining room, which has had a mixed bag of acceptance in the neighborhood, but recently things have been going pretty well in terms of their hosts, the people who host the dining room, making certain that the neighbors are satisfied with the way the dining room conducts business. And by and large, they're serving 300 meals a night at the dining room right now. For the summer, what we looked at throughout the meetings of the task force, and Chief Kerns and his representatives were there, or his representatives were there throughout the meetings, and John Reese was there throughout the meetings, what they've come up with is a dispersed dining program for the summer where the meals will be served at locations other than the downtown side, which will make for less heavy congregation of the clients in that area, and it'll give a chance to put the food service out throughout the community. It's an interesting model, one that they're going to experiment with for a seven-week period, and they'll be serving at two different locations throughout the week. So pretty excited to see how that works. Beverly Hughes is the Executive Director, and she and her staff are doing a superb job of managing the resources and distributing seven million pounds of food a year. Just a reminder, everybody knows this by now, one of every three kids in Langton will eat out of, from an emergency food source this year. That's amazing work that Food For Lane County continues to do. Andrea will probably talk more about what we have going on tomorrow, which is the Human Services Summit. It's the summit meeting at the Ford Alumni Center, is a four-hour meeting, that a group of people from all over the community, meeting to make certain that everybody is on the same page as far as the various resources that we are using for human services throughout the community. And it'll be, it's going to be attended by well over 100 people, despite the weather. They have class outside, but looking forward to that. Begins at 8:00 tomorrow, and it's going to last for four hours, so should, we'll come out of it with some pretty good ideas as to what, how we can best leverage the limited and seemingly ever dwindling resources we have for human services in the community. Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned the Mayor's One-on-One, at which I will be present also. I was about to forget that, that's the only free time I had tomorrow.
Not free anymore.
That's okay. I just wanted to mention that I heard the threats of censorship of neighborhood newsletters, and I'd like to know more about that. I hope that we're not censoring what the neighborhood people write for newsletters. And, that's it.
Mike?
I'll pass now, Mayor, thank you.
George?
A week ago Friday, I was invited to talk to the Dr. Lawfer's Context-Sensitive Reporting Journalism Class at the University of Oregon. Group of bright young students had a lot of questions about a current issue, and so I was able to give them some insight into that. And then a week ago Sunday, I was invited by Troop 100, Boy Scouts. They had some questions and concerns and interest in the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan and the skateboard, the ongoing discussion we're having about skateboard ordinance. So I was invited to go talk to them and answer some questions, and they're very aware of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan and its content. So that was encouraging that these young men are looking into this, and they've been at two meetings now. It's part of their, part of their work as the Boy Scouts, earn another merit badge. So that was kind of an interesting thing. And then this coming Thursday, we have a Traveling County Board Meeting, and some of the topics we'll be discussing is the current status of the transit room tax and some other issues. So hopefully I'll get back to you on that when we meet again.
That should be interesting. Chris?
Yeah, I only have one item. As you know, the Lang Council of Government has been in an active search for a new Executive Director. George Kleppel, who's been there 30 years, 31 years, is retiring, and he will be leaving at the end of June. And so they were actively on a national search for a new Executive Director to take over, particularly at this very critical time. And after a national search, they narrowed it down to two finalists who were interviewed last week by the Board. They were brought forward by a search committee that was made up of a number of very thoughtful folks in the community, including our own City Manager. And they had narrowed it down to these two. They were interviewed last week, and the ElCog Executive Committee has decided to offer the ElCog position to our own lobbyist Brenda Wilson, who has indicated that she is interested in accepting the position, subject to a successful negotiation of the contract. So we're very pleased to go forward with offering the position to Brenda, and the Board will actually vote on that this Thursday at their regular meeting in Vinita. So I'm very pleased that we now, looks like we have a new Executive Director secured. I think she will bring a lot of energy and excitement to the organization. She's very committed to doing a good job with the organization, so we're very pleased with the selection.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple things that I want to share. On the 28th and 29th of this month, next week, this weekend actually, the Cascade Medical Team is doing another free clinic, and I don't know where it's at, but if you look on the United Way website, it'll be listed there. I think Saturday it'll be from 8:00 to 5:00, and then Sunday from 8:00 to noon. So if you're in need of any care, don't have any insurance, they'll, you know, they move people right along, they have specialists, they have a lot of people. I went to the Trainsong Neighborhood Meeting, and they have a lot of energy around the corner of Garfield and Roosevelt, which the city had purchased from the owners, and they're looking to try and do something with it. I've encouraged them to look at matching grants and to make sure that this is the most important thing that they want to deal with, you know, if they had a want and could spend money doing whatever, that this is it, because, you know, the dollars are few. I went to Chef's Night Out with John Reese, and his lovely wife was there, and the Mayor was there, and Mr. and David, and a bunch of people were there. I thought I saw Chris, but it wasn't him, it was another family impersonating his family.
They do that.
So I was waiting for him by the cars, and he never showed up, and then it turned out he didn't even go, so that was kind of funny. I guess that's about all I have to share, Mayor.
Vander Breuer fam.
I don't know, I was like, where is Chris?
We snuck in when you were there.
Oh, that's it. Avoid me.
Alan.
Speaking at the U of O, I was invited to speak at the U of O, a bunch of students are doing, got a grant to look at the athletic department's sports and facilities and sustainability and how that all interacts. Last time the Olympic Trials were here, four years ago, it was voted the greenest bet in the country, and they're upping the bar, and they're going to go beyond that, so it'll be interesting. And beyond that, the athletic department's doing a whole bunch of different things. I also went to Earth Day, oh, that's on Wednesday, I'm sorry, that's on Thursday at 5:00, 5:30 at the Living Learning Center, and at the U of O. And then also did, went to Earth Day at E-Web, and good gathering of different events and booths, and it was a glorious day, so that was, they had to compete with that, although they got a great turnout. And then also on the same day, or the day before that, I went to the Cascade Raptor Center, which is up on Foxville Road, which is an amazing facility, and Louis Shimmo has done just an incredible job of putting together a nationally renowned center there for rehabilitation of all sorts of raptors from all over the country, from eagles to owls to kites to kestrels, and it was truly a very cool event. So that was kind of fun.
Great. George?
I don't have a lot to report, Mayor. I've been very busy researching a couple of matters, and so I don't have anything to report on that yet, but I also attended the Cascade Raptor Center.
We saw each other there?
Yes, ran into Councilors Alinka there, and it's just a fabulous place. They do a terrific job there. I've been to other Raptor Centers. We can be proud that we have one of the best ones in the whole country. It was perhaps the world, yes, who knows? Anyway, that was a nice event, and that's about all.
City Manager?
Couple things, Mayor. Thanks, Chris, for mentioning Brenda. I also was just going to mention, and we'll have time to say thanks to her, but as you know, she's just done a great job here with the city for many years, and I think is a fabulous choice by the executive team over there at ElCog, and so...
Are you patting yourself? No.
No, because I was only one of many folks in that, making that selection, so it's, I wish I could take credit for that, but I was unsuccessful in sabotaging the effort. So, I mean, she really does great work, and so we'll spend some time thinking about how we'll backfill that as we kind of go forward, and so all of you will want to be a part of some of that discussion, particularly as it relates to the governmental kinds of piece, but just a congratulations to her.
From all of us.
Do we know her last day?
I don't yet, you know, that's all part of the, yeah, contracts, and so. And then, over the weekend, you might have noticed there was an article, but in the picture was one of our officers, Darwin Terry, and I just wanted to mention, I've spent a little bit of time with him, he's one of our downtown officers. If you get a chance, when he's riding around down there, just stop and talk with him. He's just a great example of the caliber of professionalism that we have, really in all of our officers, but I think in the downtown, as they're continuing to try to really make some nice improvements down there. So just my shout-out to him. And then I wanted to, one other piece on the Food For Lane County Event. Of course, they introduced their, Ninkasi introduced their 150th Birthday Beer for Eugene, which I know Chris is really interested in. Commonwealth. And so, you know, I think they are such a great corporate citizen in this community, and I really appreciate all their support for a lot of things we do, but that will be kind of a nice piece for us too, as we celebrate. So that's what I have.
Thank you. You want to say something else?
Yeah, related to that, I went to the Green Lane Networking Event at Ninkasi, and took a tour of that facility, and it's truly very cool. And what I learned was, is that they bought the facility, or the property behind them, and they're expanding there from 70,000 barrels to 120, so it's about a 50%, 60% increase in production, plus more employees and more good beer.
More beer.
Good beer. Yeah, and it was, it's a really, really community asset, and a great growing business. I mean, they're just going gangbusters.
It's a great asset for Whittaker.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
And the recipient of our...
You guys.
Program, too.
Yes, that's right.
They're changing the face.
I'll just wrap this up by, one more comment about the We Gene Event. In part of the materials from that, I learned that the average for volunteer participation around the country is 26%, and we have 32, so something to be proud of, that we have that many people to volunteer in our community on a regular basis. That allows us to stretch our dollars much, much further than we would be able to otherwise.
32% of the community.
I can't even remember the numbers, but the incredible numbers of hours that represents in terms of contribution to the community is amazing.
The dollar value would be huge.
All right, we're going to head on into the Work Session, and we're going to talk about unruly gatherings.
Michael? Bring your team on up and...
Doubling our beer, but restricting our unruly gatherings, is that it?
I just, kind of amused me to read the ordinance concerning unruly gatherings as a tough...
I'll turn it over to Michael and his team.
Thanks, Jenna. Is this on? Yes. So hello, I'm Mayor Peter Sein. Councilors, thank you for giving us some time to come talk to you about unruly gatherings and proposed social host ordinance. My name's Michael Kinnison, I'm the manager of the Neighborhood Services Program, and have been facilitating a process that's been going on for nearly two years now, trying to come up with ideas, strategies for addressing impacts in the campus area neighborhoods from partying and binge drinking and all the associated undesirable behaviors that go along with that. Let's see if this works. Great. So if you recall, back in September, we came and gave you an update on the work of that group, and everybody got a report that looks like this, and hopefully you still have that. And one of the recommendations in there was a social host ordinance, and that's what we're here to come back to you and speak to. But let me give a little bit of context, just so we're all on the same page. The Neighborhood Liveability Working Group, as I mentioned, has been in existence for almost two years, been meeting regularly, nearly monthly, and includes a diverse mix of stakeholders, including representatives from the campus area neighborhood associations, property owners and managers, University of Oregon's Government and Community Relations Office, and the Office of Dean of Students, as well as the Department of Public Safety, past and current ASUO administration, and a number of others have been invited to attend as well. And of course, the city, including City Manager's Office and the Eugene Police Department, have been regularly participating. And the ideas that we've been, the group has generated is, represents a diversity of approaches that other communities are using, and that the research is showing can have effect, and they're on a scale from education to enforcement. And many of those we're already doing here, that we're happy to report in our community. Let's see. And then I also wanted to recognize some of the Liveability Working Group members that have really been active participants that are here today. So I know we have Jen Summers is with the university, Karen Hyatt's with the university, I see David Sonnixon with Fairmount Neighbors in the corner, Kelly Osborne there, Kathy Jo, Dean with Mallard Properties, has been a regular participant. I think that pretty much hits it. And Kelly Putnam, and of course Greg Rickoff as well. So, a couple of other things I wanted to point out before we move on is that we're not, the social host ordinance is not a consensus recommendation from the work of that group. So we have worked very closely with the group. I think we've had at least five meetings devoted just to the social host ordinance, to try to work through the key elements, to revise language in response to concerns, and there's strong support within the group for the ordinance. But it's not unanimity, and so we just want to be open about that. And in the AIS, we tried to capture a number of those concerns, I think under the heading stakeholder perspectives. And then before I move on, I just wanted to point out that the issues that we're dealing with are really a threat to the safe and peaceful enjoyment for all residents of campus area neighborhoods. So the alcohol and noise-related violations associated with partying in the campus area are on the rise, the data is showing that. And the experience of many residents is that the livability of their neighborhood is deteriorating, and what we're hearing is that more long-term residents are either leaving or even contemplating leaving the area. So the impacts are very real to the residents there, and are threatening some of the fabric of our neighborhoods. But it's also a public health and safety issue. We know that high-risk drinking is greatest among young adults aged 19 to 24, and that it occurs overwhelmingly at off-campus locations. That's non-commercial off-campus locations, like houses. House parties are the primary source of alcohol for underage youth. And there's a number of risks related to that kind of activity, serious problems including alcohol abuse and dependence, academic problems, drunk driving, injuries, death, and criminal victimization. So there's a lot of crime that occurs at these kinds of events, robbery, theft, violence, including sexual assault. It has significant impacts to our organization. And to give you a feel for that, the overtime costs during a school year for the Police Department's Party Patrol is between $130,000 and $150,000. That's just the overtime cost. So it's a significant issue, it's a challenging issue, and we're here to talk to you about one strategy we think has potential to have a good effect. So what do we currently have on the books to address this, and why isn't that working? So one of the tools we have is called the Special Response Ordinance. Unfortunately, what we're finding, and those numbers are somewhat revealing, is that it's not been a real effective at reducing loud party complaints or at deterring properties that are chronically a problem on this issue. So as you can see up there, last school year, over 800 party complaints in the near-campus area, six of those we consider really chronic problems. This year to date, we're around 550, we're a little off last year's pace, but well within the ballpark, and it looks like we're actually increasing in the number of problem, or locations that are actually a chronic problem. Why is that? Well, the Special Response Ordinance requires a large number of participants for the ordinance to qualify, so at least 25 individuals have to be present. Repeat violations must occur in a very short time frame for response costs to actually kick in, so we're talking about a 90-day window, which is not a very long time, it's not even a full semester. There's no penalty on the first occurrence, so there's no repercussions if we respond to you on the first time. And the violation does not follow the person, and there is no property owner liability. So the latter part is a key piece in this, is one of the reasons that social host ordinance can have a deterrent effect, is that there is a link to property owners. They could potentially be held liable. And then I wanted to just make clear, if the social host ordinance was passed, that staff is recommending the, that we would remove from the books the Special Response So the Social Host Ordinance is an approach that includes education and increased accountability for repeat offenses for both the party holder and the property owner. And the interest here is really is not in doing more enforcement, but it's actually reducing the need for responding to parties. What we are learning is that social host ordinances can provide a real deterrent effect when they're coupled with strong education and media outreach campaigns and other intervention strategies. So in your AIS, we speak to a communications plan, we acknowledge that, that we need to work hard on educating people about what this is, why we are doing it, and what the repercussions would be. This is not something that is new, that we've kind of cooked up here in Eugene, there's more than 150 communities across the US that have implemented social host laws. And it's evidence-based. There's current research that shows social host laws are an effective form of policy in reducing binge drinking at off-campus parties, attendance of large parties by youth, as well as drinking and driving. But a social host ordinance is not a solution in and of itself. There is no single solution for this problem. We've yet to find the community that has the one thing that works. However, it is an evidence-based approach, and it does have results, and we will still have to continue to be vigilant and approach the problem from multiple angles. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Greg. He's going to tell you a little bit about the University of Oregon and what they're doing.
All right, thank you very much for having me here this evening. I want to be clear on the outset that the university administration will not be taking a position on this legislation, although undoubtedly you will hear from a number of students, faculty, and staff during the public, the town hall, yeah, the public hearing and the public comment period. So it's likely to be a very robust, and I'd welcome a robust conversation. I want to be clear that we do have, we do not have enforcement off-campus, but we do have a fair amount of education going on. We have created, for the last three years, we've had a good neighbors team made up of the Department of Public Safety, Student Affairs, geography team, which helps us with tracking, the Conflict Resolution Unit, Communications and Community Relations. Those are weekly meetings, and it's a chance to be a think tank, look for strategies, education strategies, and also respond to incidents. I definitely want to help you understand the deep engagement we have with the City of Eugene in this effort. The Eugene Police Department's been exceptional, Kelly Putnam has done a tremendous job of tracking responses every weekend. The community, the neighbors, this university knows what's been happening in the neighborhoods, what EPD had to respond to, what things were going on, and that's a way for us to follow up, both the city and the university can follow up with neighbors, with folks that have held parties that have gotten out of control. The Party Patrol's been tremendous, not just in response, they do a significant amount of education. They'll come out, they'll meet with fraternities and sororities, they'll meet with groups, talk about what goes on, talk about the victimization that happens. It might not happen at the party, but two or three days later, all of a sudden, the flat-screen TV's gone, the sound system's gone. We've seen enough property crimes associated with it that it's worth us all looking at. Finally, the municipal court staff has been exceptional. We've had time with Judge Allen, and we've talked to, talked through the full system, looking for things that we can do collaboratively, you know, including some restorative justice elements to help young people, perhaps with their first offense, better understand the impacts of their actions, and do something appropriate to mitigate that. So it's been a full-team effort. Education, education, education. It's one of the pieces, as a university, you would like to think we'd be doing that, and we indeed are. Number of you have participated in the community, welcome. That includes the Mayor, the City Manager, President Ben Eckstein. We've had, we've gotten out there with our Your Neighbors and You program, which is written by the city and the university, talking about responsible behaviors. We've also been getting the magnets out, so people can go door-to-door, so they have each other's cell phone number, so if, for any reason, from, you know, I've lost my dog to you left your light on, or your garbage cans out, it's a way for neighbors to contact one another. You've helped us get that information out there. We've had three years of the campus housing fair, we're really just building a program to help these first-time, second-time, or perhaps third-time renters make great decisions about roommates, about signing that contract, about making decisions about what their off-campus housing looks like. In addition to that, we do regular monthly electronic newsletters. Every month, there's something in there about, you know, partying responsibly, know your rights, learn about the rental rehab program, they're kind of chock-full of information for the students that want to take the time and look at that. So the education piece is there. The programming on campus is something that's continuing. We used to have a fairly significant problem with Halloween, we've really built up, a lot with the ASUO's help, we've built up more programming on campus to bring folks back to the heart of campus. Those programs seem to be working. It's been several Halloweens since we've had significant untoward behavior. We're doing watch parties that can bring folks back in campus, and we are even experimenting, and I know Councilors Alinka will appreciate this, with having pub nights at the EMU, which is a limited and responsible way of having events with beer and wine back in the heart of campus for those that are of age. One of the challenges we've had from the neighbors is when the campus went dry, it offloaded the program into the near-campus neighborhoods. There will always be an issue of underage drinking that we need to grapple with together, but there's pieces that we can be doing to bring folks back into the heart of campus.
That was unrelated to my comment about Ninkasi.
Okay, sure. Thank you. In addition to that, when things do go awry, we've got some tools. Please find included in your packet, our joint newsletter that's signed by our Department of Public Safety Director, your police chief, Michael Kinnison, and others. It is, it sets the norms, and when we've worked with... It is, it sets the norms, and when we've worked with peer institutions, other universities and cities, setting expectations for what are the standards is one of the pieces you have to do. We have not had a, no, excuse me, we've had one of the 40-plus letters we've sent, we've had one household continue to have parties and continue to be a problem. Those other 39 have responded to those letters. In addition to that, our dean of students and our captain for the Department of Public Safety will do knock and talks, has gone visiting in the early hours, the following Saturday, Sunday, or Monday mornings, to have conversations with folks who's, when we can find it is a U of O student who's had a party, they've gone to visit, we've also brought them in to have those conversations. So the engagement pieces are there, and there is still a chunk of the problem that we're not attending to.
So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the ordinance itself. I'm going to start out by explaining what it is not. This is not a prohibition of social gatherings or parties. This is not an ordinance to regulate lawful gatherings. This also does not affect property owners without significant repeat offenses in a 12-month period. So, you know, the property owner piece of this is going to come after repeated problems at a particular address. It also does not infringe on civil rights. It does focus on behavior, as opposed to focusing on particular groups or individuals. And it, we don't see it as the silver bullet. We don't expect it's going to solve all of our problems, but we do feel like it will be a really important piece of legislation that can help us, along with the other tools that we have. So, the details of the ordinance. It prohibits anyone from organizing, hosting, or facilitating an unruly gathering. When a gathering, what causes it to become unruly is five or more people at the gathering, alcohol is being consumed or served, and at least two other illegal behaviors have to be going on at this, at this party. That would include liquor, state liquor violations, you know, assault menacing, any disorderly conduct, noise, public urination, littering, all those things that tend to go along with with large and unruly gatherings. So again, it's, you know, the parties that, not every party that we respond to is going to rise to the level that would warrant a social host citation. We still have the violations, the things that are on the books, prohibited noise, whatever is applicable if those gatherings don't meet the standards for the social host ordinance. This is something that will be effective citywide, and I just wanted to point out that we've talked about the number of party complaints that we've received for the near-campus neighborhoods, but I'd like to point out that September through March this year, we've talked about the 550 near-campus complaints, but we've had 1,146 complaints, loud-party complaints, citywide in that time period. Last school year, when we had 863 near-campus party complaints, citywide, we had 700, or 1,732. So it's not just a campus area issue. This is a citywide issue. The other thing that I wanted to mention just about that is that, you know, the campus area boundaries have kind of blurred over the last several years. And so it's, you know, people are moving farther out into the communities than they have before, so it's not just a campus problem. So the details of the ordinance, if we respond to a complaint of an unruly gathering, and we find that it does meet the criteria, the person or persons found responsible for hosting the party, and we specify what qualifies a person as a host in the ordinance, would get a criminal citation of $500, and that would be the social host citation. They would also, at that time, be warned that their second violation in a 12-month period would be a graduated fine in addition to the civil penalty. So a second or subsequent response within a 12-month period would not only result in a criminal citation, it would result in a civil penalty of response costs for police and possibly fire if they're required to respond. And as far as the property owner, when one of their tenants receives a social host citation, they get a written notice, a letter stating that one of their tenants has received a social host citation. I imagine that we will include a copy of the ordinance itself, so they can read that and understand it. And this will, again, each time one of their tenants is cited, they will get another notice advising that their tenants have been cited. The civil penalty for the property owner would not kick in until the fourth social host citation is given at their property, the same property, within a 12-month period. So they've, they've had three warnings already that their tenant at this particular location has received a social host citation. On the fourth occurrence within 12 months, that property owner will receive a civil penalty for response costs.
Will you cover how this affects public property also, as opposed to private property?
It does, the way the ordinance is written, it does, it could, it could be, you know, public property, a dwelling and adjoining, adjoining land. For instance, somebody rents the picnic shelters at Alton Baker Park, and their gathering becomes unruly, there are illegal behaviors that rises to the level of a social host citation, that a social host citation could be issued to the host of that gathering.
I'll have more questions on the mayor.
So the other aspect to the civil penalty and the social host citation is it follows the person and the address. So if I live at one address fall term, and I receive a social host citation, and winter term I move to a different address, if I receive a social host citation at that address within a 12-month period, that is my second citation. So it's, it kind of deals with the issue of, was one of the, one of the problems that we had with the first response warning notice, was that it didn't really follow the person, it was more attached to an address. So this, this way, we can kind of deal with that aspect of it. So it follows the person and the address. So as far as the appeals process goes, we have lined out in the ordinance pretty specific steps that property owners can take to avoid the civil penalty. We've set forth some, some good-faith measures that if they can prove, provide documentation that they have taken the measures that we've lined out in the ordinance that are good-faith efforts to correct the problem, they can avoid the civil penalty. This ordinance does not require property owners to take any action, follow any specific steps, or pursue eviction. All we do is outline the steps that they can take to avoid the penalty, and what they do with that is their choice. And this, again, outlines the steps that property owners can take. What we'd like to see is, on the first offense, when their tenant gets a social host citation, and they get the notification that that's occurred, they would issue a written warning to their tenants. The second offense, they would issue a notice to their tenants that termination of their lease or an eviction could occur if they don't correct the problem, if there are subsequent offenses. The third offense, the step they would need to take would be to initiate the eviction process for the tenants who have received the social host citations. So if they've taken those steps, and their property still receives a fourth social host citation, they can show that they've taken these, these good-faith measures to correct the problem, and they can avoid the civil penalty. So primarily, you know, what we're doing is allowing the property owners to avoid that penalty by, by taking certain steps to correct the problem. We understand that they can't control always everything that happens, but we do expect that they would take the necessary steps to try and correct that problem, and if they've made that good-faith effort, then they can avoid that penalty. And I think that pretty much covers it.
Just a couple other things we wanted to note. There's a, a public hearing is tentatively scheduled for May 14th, and action tentatively scheduled for May 29th.
I have...
Ready for questions?
Yes, they're lined up and ready to go here. I've got Allen, and then Pat, and then George Pulling. Allen, and then George Brown.
So I want to thank Michael in particular, but everybody that was on the Neighborhood Livability Working Group, who helped develop the livability report, but also working on this particular thing. This is a pretty big problem. My part of town, and obviously with the numbers, it's all over town, it's the number-one thing I hear about as a city councilor when I go get some milk at the store, and it really does impact people's livability. And the 550, just this last seven months last year, is a demonstration of it. It's the years and years and years of frustration about this that has built up. It's a very expensive problem to deal with. Party patrol is $130,000 a year that we spend on that. And what we're not, we're not talking about all the youth and students, and just to clarify, it's not just, it's not just students, it's youth, and people that have problems with alcohol and dealing with it, and having unruly parties, and really, in particular, the chronic ones. You know, we made strides, it's not fixed yet, we've, we need more tools and some, around accountability and the sanctions. And zero in on six or 10 a year, this would really impact. That's, that's the magnitude of this, but that six or 10 can have a gigantic impact on people's livability in a neighborhood. And, you know, this isn't new, 150 cities, as Michael said, 27 states have done this. I think staff's done a good job of listening to all the different folks and coming up with a lot of different changes that we've made to it. The mayor and I met with the ASUO students that were here as well, and talked to them, and there's some other things that, ideas that I'd like to, to have put, to investigate as we move forward on this. And in particular, how do you identify the responsible person? And, you know, if you have five people living in, and one throws the party, do they all get blamed? It's not real clear to me.
Well, we already, the officers already, when they respond to parties, identify who the responsible person is. That's the person who would receive the prohibited noise citation, the person who would receive the first response warning notice. They do that by interviewing the people on the scene, asking who lives there, speaking to the people, you know, to find out who the tenants are, and they already do that. So this, you know, determining who's responsible for the gathering is not anything new. That's something that we already do.
Yeah, the police department does that.
Yes.
The police officer responds.
Yes.
And then, one of the things that I think we'd want to do is look back at this, if, I encourage us to enact this piece, this ordinance, but if we do, I'd like to look at, back at it after about a year, and make sure that it's working the way we want it to work. So I think we'd want to add in that mandatory review after about a year, see, make sure that it's still working the way we want it to, and make changes or tweaks to it that would make sense. And I want to look at, maybe on this first, first offense, maybe having a community service as a potential way to pay off that fine instead of just cash.
Want another round, Allen?
Yeah, I would.
So did you want to respond to any of, for instance, to your, any information you have on the community service instead of a fine for the first response?
Well, we have talked quite a bit about community service, restorative justice. There are a lot of communities that have those things in place. They're not something really that would get written into the ordinance, that's something that the court would, would take care of. So if the court has something in place for a restorative justice model or community service, that is something that the court would provide, but it's not normally something that's written into the ordinance itself.
Pat, you're next.
I kind of raised my eyebrows at this brand-new problem of drinking around campus, because when I was going to school in the early 70s, nobody.
Nobody.
Never a problem, never?
Just as peaceful as can be.
80s, too.
Kids, I swear. The, it's interesting to see how you've moved forward, that's very well, very well done, and very deliberative in the process. The question that I have at this point in time is regarding the definition of unruly gatherings, and it seems to be, you made the comment that it's not just a campus issue, it is indeed a citywide issue. I think people who live in other places can attest to that. And it does happen, not just in private, on private property, but it also happens in public property. And my questions earlier were surrounding, what is, this is going on in a neighborhood park on a regular basis, for instance? If gatherings of five or more people are indeed in a public place, they are urinating in public, disorderly conduct, noise, two or more of the following, you know, if that's happening in a public place like a park, does this ordinance apply there, and how is it enforced?
Well, you know, I don't know that it would be the most appropriate response in that, that certain type of a situation. The way that it's written, it's, it's kind of directed at dwellings and the surrounding property around the dwellings. That's not to say that we wouldn't respond to an issue in the park and deal with it the way we do now, which would be, whatever citations, individual citations are applicable. It's possible, I don't see really that the social host citation would probably fit exactly into that particular, again, if, you know, if you rented the facility at Alton Baker, and it's a dwelling in their surrounding property, that, that could apply, but just the park in general, people using the park, I think individual citations would probably be more appropriate.
Well, I'll bring it into a, kind of a real situation that is occurring in a park in West Eugene, where a group of five or more people are doing, not just one or two of these, but all of them. And the host is indeed the city of Eugene, because it is the city's park.
Okay.
And it does, it doesn't happen 863 times, you know, the way you've delineated around in the campus area, but, but I guess I'm, I'm kind of fishing for how does that, how is that handled when it's the city's?
Well, that might be more appropriate for Jerry to speak to.
And it may also be a different, different work session than this, but I'd like to raise that flag, that it doesn't only occur in residences, and in fact, when it does occur on public property, sometimes it can be even more disturbing and disconcerting to people surrounding it. So, again, that's probably a different work session than this.
Okay, George Pulling?
I'd just like to thank everybody that's worked on this, also for, you know, going out at the very start and looking elsewhere to see the best practices from other communities, also for reaching out and trying to get as many different groups involved in this discussion from the onset, and also for setting the timetable for the whole process to get the input from U of O students. I think since this is primarily what brought this discussion to the table, I think it's important that, that we do include them in this. You know, maybe to address Pat's concerns, maybe this is something that could be handled through muni courts as, as a way of a probation, for example, for people that are cited and convicted for this type of conduct in a city park. I don't know, that, maybe that'd be one way to handle it. If this ordinance were to go into effect, I think a two-year sunset would be better. One year, you know, you see how it operates, two years, you can actually see a better results, you get a better idea of how the results are, you know, the first year, everybody's getting used to it, second year, most people should be aware of it and see how that goes. I do have a couple of questions. One is, you said that the civil penalty is on the fourth citation at the same address. What if it's not the same host that caused the party at that address?
It, it still applies. It doesn't have to be the same host. The, for the property owner liability, it's the address itself.
Okay, so if the property owner or manager gets rid of all the tenants, gets new tenants, and a month later, they're back for the fourth time, although it's the first party this new group has had, are they?
We have had discussion about, and I think we have written it into the ordinance, that if the offending tenants have been removed, then that could start that 12-month window over again.
Okay, that's, okay.
It's, it's one of the, one of the steps, if you look, if you have the ordinance in front of you on page three, is the last step, number four, is prior to the fourth occurrence, new tenants replaced those who committed the previous violation, and the owners or owner's agent implemented reasonable precautions. That would be one of the things that could be considered by the city manager as good-faith effort. So there was some discussion that, by some of the property manager folks, that, yeah, what if, like you said, what if I'm trying to get folks out, like you told me, it's a third try, but that takes time, and I, and I do that, and I get a fourth violation, and I get dinged for doing the right thing. So the idea is that, we tried to be... So the idea is that, we tried to be, we tried to be as explicit as possible to give folks a sense of what would show that you're really trying to manage the problem. And, and so that's why there's some specificity in here. But there would be judgment on the city's part as to what, what really showed good faith effort to do that.
Counselor Polling, just wanted to add to that. There's, there's been a phenomenon of houses, live-out houses, that have gone from, you know, one handful of students to the next. It's been a transitioned house, but it's identified and kept, you know, as a, as a place of, a party house. So we wanted to be able to look at and see if, make sure that there's tools to address multiple generations, if this house has indeed earned a reputation and is, you know, passed on virtually for those purposes, so.
All right. And then another question I have is, since we're going to put a certain amount of burden on the property managers or property owners, is the city going to assist the property owners in any way, either financially or with some sort of legal advice or filling out the proper forms? Or are we going to be working with these, these folks to make sure that they're not a victim of the circumstances?
Well, we are going to have a vigorous, if this passes, a media campaign. And we have several mechanisms to get the word out to the property owners in advance so they're well aware of this prior to its, its implementation. So they...
And we wouldn't have any intent of providing any legal advice to anybody outside of a city organization. So, and that's just a standard practice for...
Okay. I was just kind of, just kind of curious because we are kind of putting a burden on some of these, these property owners. And I was just wondering if there's any additional help other than the original education process that we're going to be able to afford them to help them get through this process so, like I said, so they're not becoming another victim in the whole, in the whole, the whole process. So, I just, maybe there's, as this thing progresses, maybe there are different ways or different things that we can look at where we can work more closely with the property owners that are diligently trying to resolve the issues, but for whatever reason, they're not able to.
And that might be as we, as, if the ordinance is implemented, we'll learn as we go. And then as we learn, we'll have an opportunity to, you know, make some shifts and changes based on what we learn out of that. And part of that could be is how do we work with the property owners? Because I think the goals hopefully are the same. And so how do we best work with them? And so we'll learn as we go.
And then one last thing. The county has a similar type ordinance and, and when this comes back to us, if we could get the, the county ordinance attached with it or some kind of a matrix to show where the similarities are and where the differences are. Because as you get in some of the outlying areas, you start blurring the jurisdictional boundaries. Unless you have a computer, you don't know if you're in the county or in the city or your neighbor's in the county and you're in the city. So if we can kind of get a, a side-by-side comparison so we can see where the differences are.
George Brown?
Thank you. Yes, thanks for asking that question, Counselor Polling. That was one of my questions. So landlords, you know, evicted the offenders and has a whole new crew in there and has the bad luck to draw another set of irresponsible hosts. My first question is, when we look at the definitions, there's no definition of host. There's no definition of social host. And I think that, you know, there needs to be one in there for, just so everybody's pretty clear about who, who this, who the host is. And, you know, is it the person that is leasing the property from the landlord? Is it the person that went out and bought the keg? Is it, I mean, you know, I think that just legally, there has to be some kind of definition in an ordinance. We've got all these other definitions. I think there needs to be a more clear definition of social host. Would you like to speak to that?
Well, we've had some discussion on that issue and we initially did define host, but I think there was some confusion. It was a confusing issue. Members of the group couldn't agree on whether they understood who the host was under that definition, which is why we kind of left host out and we just more defined what it was to, to facilitate that, that gathering. So the person who is responsible for the gathering is the person who facilitates or just that?
This, thank you. But that speaks to my point. We have to know who's responsible. Someone has to be designated the host. There should be criteria for determining who the host is because if someone's going to be getting a citation, or two, or three, there has to be a definition of who the host is. And I know, you know, it's tricky, but I, that's the, kind of the underlying reason why this ordinance has been crafted, is to determine who is responsible. And there has to be, I think the ordinance really is kind of, well, first of all, it's vague unless you don't, there needs to be a definition of who the host is, who's responsible. Especially if they're going to be cited and asked to pay a fine or a civil penalty or do community service. Or we have to know who the host, we have to know who the host is. Also, I think counselors saw, probably saw David Monk's email today, and he is a landlord, and he had a concern about the definition of unruly conduct, which I share his concern. It says, "Any two or more of the following behaviors can occur on property and that can be deemed unruly conduct." And if so, let's, for instance, if you took, say, B, item B, along with item H or item L. B is five people or more out on public property who've entered public space. H is noise and noise disturbance, as defined in sections 408. But none of these sections have been provided for us to look at. So let's say there's five people, they're being noisy, and let's say they're lettering. Well, that could be five or 10 people having a political demonstration, walking down the street and could accidentally drop some pamphlets. That could be a strict definition of...
Alcohol has to be, be served for it to be unruly.
Another round?
Yes, the way, yeah, I need another round because it's not stated that way.
Okay, Betty?
First, thanks for the list of people who were involved. I appreciate that always. I, I'm concerned about the definition of an unruly gathering. I think it's rather vague. I'm concerned about the fines. I know that people can invite a few friends over and they may bring a few friends and other people may hear that there's a party someplace. And who's, and it can grow without anyone's being, any one person being responsible. And then I have concern about passing laws when we aren't enforcing the ones that we have according to some of this material. I, I think we should be very cautious about passing any new laws. Be sure that there's a reason for it and that it won't have unfortunate consequences. I, I know we've, when we've discussed something like this before, I've said how difficult it would be for many students to pay a fine of $500, for example. And one person said, "Oh, that's easy." Well, it's easy if you're rich, but if you're just a student and you're not wealthy, it's not easy. I think the idea of letters to neighbors is a good idea. I had a question here, how are neighbors notified? Good neighbor complaint process. I think if, if, anyone who's a neighbor of a student house knows where they can call if there's a problem. And I, I think the purpose should be to solve the problem instead of to penalize people. I live next door to a house where some students have been living for, not the same ones, but for quite a few years now, five or six years at least. And I did find out who the owner was. I think I should have been notified by somebody maybe without, but I found out and had a telephone conversation. There's never been a problem since then. And one time when students were, I think the owner has been responsible and has let his tenants know what's expected. One time when they were going to have a party, they came to my house and gave me, and went to all the houses nearby and gave us their cellphone numbers. I don't know if they could have heard it or not if I called, but at any rate, it showed they were concerned and that they, but I, I would like to try other things before we pass a law with penalties and try enforcing what we have. I think that good neighbor, the letter sounds really good to, to let people know who's living by them and where they can call. And is there somebody they can call in the middle of the night besides the police?
You're selling them, right, buddy?
We do actually have many things that we've been doing for the last couple of years that don't involve enforcement, that have not really had the desired effect. The Eugene Police Department has something called the Rental Property Program. And what that does is it's a free service for any rental property owner can enroll in this program. And what it does is generates an automatic email to the property owner anytime there's a police incident initiated at their property. So every time there's a hard complaint, these property owners are getting an email. So we're making them aware and there's no enforcement or no punitive component to that whatsoever. And also what we've been doing is going through the party complaints. And anyone who's not in the rental property program, whose property has generated a complaint, gets a letter explaining that there was a complaint and inviting them to participate in the rental property program. So we've been doing many things for the last couple of years to keep property owners informed of what goes on in their properties.
Well, I was thinking of a way that people could know who the property owner is, neighbors could know, and complain directly to that person instead of to the police.
Some neighborhoods have specifically done that research and, and have made sure that they're doing those 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM phone calls to try to do that. But it's been hit or miss. There's no program.
We don't, we don't have that information in the city to provide to...
The university could have it, couldn't you? I think Greg, I think Greg told me once that he knows where everybody lives.
I'll provide that along with, with my cellphone number.
Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I love it when I get to say this, I agree with Betty. I think that there are plenty of, I'm, I'm reticent to enact new nuisance-oriented ordinances when there are so many we don't enforce now, say, illegal camping and such, so. There are several concerns I have with this. I'm not sure where I am on it yet. But a couple of questions. First of all, there's a, there's a clear distinction between the owner and the manager of the property. The management of the property isn't fined, it's the ownership, is that correct? And that extends as well to, say, corporations of, of folks who may be in management of a property as opposed to, or have ownership of a property, they would jointly be fined, is that correct? Specifically, how are Greek organizations handled with this?
Okay.
Is this the letter?
Yes.
So the spot penalty that we've been talking about is for the owner of the property, not for the property manager?
Okay.
Thank you.
For example, I was once, and I'm not now, but I was once a member of a householding corporation that owned a property that was a fraternity at the university. So would all of the corporate officers be fined in such a case?
No, it wouldn't be. It's not personal to owners of the corp, the members of the corporation. It's the corporation.
Okay.
My understanding is there isn't alcohol allowed on the fraternities and sororities?
Right, my understanding too.
Shouldn't be an unruly gathering in any of those places.
It's always been my understanding too, yeah.
Mike, you finished?
I am, thank you, Mayor.
Andrea, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was at the police commission when this came up and there was quite a few, there was some public comment. And then there was some response from the commissioners that worked on this. And it was pretty interesting because a lot of people put a lot of work into it and I really appreciate it. But I heartburn with it as it stands as something citywide. So I have some questions. If you could get my, get them back to me, this would be, would be nice. So you stated that you had numbers for the city of this particular issue. So are those actual call for service that are actually people, everybody's getting cited?
They are complaints.
Okay, but they're not actual citations?
They are not.
Okay, so can I get that, those numbers with the actual citations of the ones that are truly breaking the law? I also would like to see the proposed, if you do this, social host ordinance, will there be a cost saving to the party patrol? Because if that's $135,000 that we're spending on officers there, there should be some savings if this goes into effect. I also appreciate the comment about the unruly gathering. I agree, it needs to be, needs to be defined a little bit better for me. And my other question is, does the party patrol respond to other areas outside of the campus area?
Occasionally they will. Primarily, they are kept within the near campus neighborhood. If there is another unruly party going on somewhere else in town, they have been known to go to those areas, but primarily that they've stayed in the near campus neighborhoods. But they have, they have responded to other areas of town in the past.
So, so thank you for that. So I'll be waiting for those. And I just want to ask, or just make a kind of a comment. You know, there are businesses that are much worse neighbors than, than, maybe not according to Alan, but there are businesses that are as problematic in other parts of town. And I was, and I knew that there was a, last time I was on police commission, there was some kind of an ordinance or something we did around, if you call in yourself and you don't get in trouble, but if, if somebody else calls for you, then you get fined. I forgot what that was, but I'd like to see that policy. I don't know if you remember.
The party response.
It is, and it has to do with businesses also?
Yeah.
Because I don't, didn't, maybe I didn't read this correctly, but I didn't see anything about businesses in this.
Not the social.
Go ahead.
The social host ordinance doesn't address that, but the response ordinance that was passed many years ago, qualified businesses, or if a property, or if a host called the police because the party had become unruly, they wouldn't be held accountable under that one. Same is true for parks and towns.
Okay, so how does that fit in with this? I'd like to see how that fits in with this. And then I guess I just have another little, little bit of heartburn. You know, if somebody, if there is a, say, for instance, a house outside of the university area, but they're having chronic issues with parties, I would hope that we take it a step farther and actually look to see what the situation is in the home. And I don't necessarily think that that's the police department's job, but I would hope that they would do the appropriate referrals. You know, if there are people who are drinking consistently and causing rowdy, there's chances are there's other issues going on there. So I would hope that that would be incorporated and a part of what, what they do. But I probably will not be supporting it if it is citywide unless I am given a lot of good information about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Chris?
Thank you. I, I appreciate all the conversations that's been going on. What I'm hearing is whenever you create these kinds of things, you want to ensure that they are built in a way to be as protective of the innocent or the accident as possible. I don't want to use the word innocent, but I do think there are those situations where somebody could accidentally be swept up in this. One example would be the party that was talked about before, where someone has a few friends over and it gets out of control. And I would call it an accident, that may be a stretch, but it wasn't their intention for that to happen. And the fact that the first offense has a large fine on it could be perhaps something that we could look at and say, just so we're careful, just so we're erring on the side of being overly cautious for the first offense, because it could be an accident, maybe you don't have quite as punitive an outcome. For me, once you get to the second, or the third, or the fourth, it's sounding a lot less like an accident and I'm starting to see much more intentional inappropriate behavior involved. I appreciate the fact that you have to have a number of conditions in place, but I think there's a lot more work that can be done on those conditions. And the purpose of that would try to be make sure that, once again, someone who is, you know, accidentally swept up doesn't get caught in a way that somebody who is, who doesn't really care. I am really interested in trying to deal with the core problem because I do believe there is a core problem here. Every year we see in the paper about the parties that get out of control. And so there is a core problem, but I want to make sure that this deals with the core problem and doesn't sweep a lot of extra people up in that as, as we work on it. And so I think it's important that you craft this in a way that it can distinguish between those two. And the types of behaviors and the point at which different consequences kick in may, may be one of the ways to approach that. I think everybody has brought up really good points and I, I hope those can be incorporated into here. I'm not inclined to say, oh, well, don't do anything, because I do still believe there's a core problem. But I think there's still a lot of work that can be done to try to craft this in a way where it can be as capable as possible of accommodating what I, what I, what I keep referring to as the accidental incident and not the highly intentional one. I really want this to deal with that intentional aspect and not just everything that happens. I don't want us to be perceived as coming down too hard, any more than I want us to be blind to what, to what's going on. So it's a nuanced kind of thing, but I think that's where we can really get some, some effective outcome with this discussion.
I would just like to make a couple of comments that I'm interested in the restorative justice piece. I'm interested in there being some other option on the first time where it's taken seriously their consequences. seriously their consequences, but it's not a big giant fine, so I'm interested in that. I'm also interested that those other people who, I don't know they, how they do that, when there's multiple people living, where they each have their own lease, or how that is, but I'd like to be sure that the people who are innocent are protected, and that should be foremost in how we address this. I also think that there needs to be an appeal process for, for the renter, as well as the property owner. There's got to be someplace you go if you think this has not been done, this is not right. I suppose you could say the court, but I don't know if you want to do that, or have another, another, less expensive way to go about doing that. And then the other big piece for me is, because we've been through this on other items, I just want to be sure that, that if we, if you choose to do this, if we choose to do this, that we keep data, and we know what the data is that we want kept from the very get-go, so that we're not a year down the road and saying, "Well, we don't have enough information to tell us how this really, really went." So, I think really understanding the information we want, and accruing it from the very beginning should we decide to do this, is kind of an essential piece of doing this the right way. And then, we have, we're supposed to, we have about five minutes when we want to get to, get to the next item, and I've got Allen and George Brown in the queue. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, we have been, we've been doing things for years in these neighborhoods. In the Neighborhood Livability Work Group, there's three and a half pages of all the current and past things that are occurring to deal with the livability issues, not all of them directly related to, around unruly gatherings, parties, but a lot of different things. And so, there is quite a bit of stuff that we have been doing, and it's the frustration level of the neighbors that is, that is bringing this one forth, I think. And, you know, this, this doesn't apply to almost everybody. It is a very limited group of homes, or houses, or places that this would apply to. Last year, it was only six, and this year, it's only 10. It's not everybody that this would apply to, because of the way it's structured. So, it's, it's those chronic houses that are becoming a big problem, that we don't have adequate sanctions, we don't have adequate tools to deal with, nor to deal with, with these folks. So, can we limit this geographically, within the city?
When we were looking at a number of different options, and we met with the county court judge, and the court administrator, and our city prosecutor, we were discouraged, or we were encouraged, whatever strategies we came up with that had an enforcement component, that we didn't limit them to any particular area, that they would apply, that had a broad applicability. So, that's why we went forward with something-
Because, why?
I don't really, to be honest with you, I'm not sure exactly why, other than, and maybe others that were there in this conversation can help me, but the perception that it's treating a particular area, and not equally with the rest of the community.
One of the other things that we discovered from the data that we've looked at, in a conference that we actually attended, a lot of the data shows that there's no displacement with a social host ordinance, because it is in effect citywide. So, we aren't pushing out the problem to some other area of town. It needs to be a citywide ordinance, so that doesn't happen. We, we don't want to solve the problems for South University and push them into West Eugene, or wherever the case may be. So, it really takes care of the displacement issue.
Could travel by party bus to other parts of town?
Yeah, that may be true, but that's exactly what we do with the exclusion zone. It only applies to a very small part of the city, and it does push out problems to other areas. So, can we get that resolved, back to this? I too would like to see a definition of responsible person, and also then unruly gathering tightened up a bit. George, I wasn't suggesting a sunset, I was just suggesting a mandatory review and modification if we need it. So, I wasn't actually suggesting a sunset. And then, the restorative justice part, you mentioned how, can you tell us how we do that, in later in the memo, because we don't have time? And then, maybe the definition of the responsible person, the procedures that the police officers use to identify that would help us in identifying the definition, or maybe that would be sufficient. And then, yeah, one of the other things to alleviate people's concerns about the first offense, if a party gets out of hand, they've got to control it, because they're, it's just a mistake. We should have a provision that allows the responsible party to call EPD and say, "Ah, my party's out of control, and it needs some help." And, and then they would not be held responsible for it. So, that might be something we want to add. And then, this also change, this might change, this will change leases. And, and do we have, I don't think we can actually require that this be part of a lease, can we? I'd like that answered, and whether, and then, in sublease agreements, especially, maybe there's a model sublease agreement we can have between five tenants of a house, that they can, so they can all understand the rules. And then, maybe the stuff on slide 10 that you had, which is the details about how you do a go-in fake effort if you're an owner, is there a way to, like, put that into a packet, so people can understand it better?
George Brown?
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to go over something. I'm very supportive of this ordinance. I remember attending the first public meeting at the Long House, two and a quarter years ago, it was one of my first big meetings that I went to, and after I got on council, and I realized the tremendous amount of work that's gone in. All of the concerns are valid. There are, actually, many of these things are not just happening around the university, they're happening all over town. And I, the ordinance, I believe, should be citywide, because these things are creeping, the students live all over town, they're creeping into the Jefferson West Side neighborhood, there's several party houses there. And, you know, it's not just college kids, high school kids, and junior, and middle school kids even, can't, can't hold wild parties when their parents are not supervising them properly, so it's, I don't want to single out, you know, university students. Also, I think it's, it's really essential to have some kind of a definition, as clear as, clearly as it can be defined of host in here, to make it work, so that everybody, landlords, hosts, the hosts themselves. Am I a host? I don't know. What's, what's that mean? That, I think that really needs to be spelled out. And I, my, my concern with the definition of unruly conduct was that, I think it was more just wordsmithing, and we all understand that alcohol has to be involved, but you could read it a different way, and so if, if A was somehow incorporated into the initial part of the definition, and that would just clear up that one little thing totally, it'd be totally unambiguous. Otherwise, I, I think it's very good, I think it's a really good piece of work.
Quickly, I want, really embrace the idea of looking at restorative justice. There are a lot of university towns that are looking at kind of an alcohol education piece for those that have found themselves with a citation. At that very meeting you were talking about, Councilor Brown, we talked about the possibility of hiring a substance abuse prevention director. We hired a remarkable person in Jennifer Summers, she's doing this work now. We've had one year of alcohol EDU, which is, which was voluntary. As of next year, it's a mandatory online training. Universities have great success with that. That will be something for U of O students, incoming U of O students, but of course, we all live together with LCC, with non-affiliates. And thank you for pointing out middle school and high school students who do find their way into the West University and South University neighborhoods, looking for that activity, looking for that open door. So, that's, that's a good reminder. But we'll take on that restorative justice.
I just have one more quick question. I noticed that party buses are not addressed in this ordinance. Is there, that's still going to be a problem? And I'm wondering if there's ongoing study about regulating. I know it's a charter service, and it's kind of different, but I'm wondering if anything's happening on that front.
We haven't pursued something on that, Council? We've, we've got clarification that our existing policies and ordinances don't regulate them, so it would take something else.
Just quickly, Mayor, it sounds like there's still a lot of questions, so we may end up moving that public hearing back from May 14th, so you may see that differently, Andy Tenenbaum, in case you do. And then also, I would just encourage, if you haven't had a chance to do a ride-along with the party patrol between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM, on a Friday or Saturday while school is in session, I would seriously encourage you to do that prior to taking action on this particular item.
Or a walk-along.
Or a walk-along, either way.
So, just to wrap this up, I want to say that I agree with you, and I encourage us to go slow and get it right. I mean, I don't think what we want to do is push hard and not have it be what we want it to be, and if, if we're going to do it. I also think that we need to think about this, this is a cultural change that you're trying to achieve. This is a, kind of a method of pushing toward that cultural change, but it is a cultural change, and our, and our culture right now seems to be encouraging drinking as opposed to not encouraging it, so we have to find a way to switch, switch that, that cultural part of our, part. And the other thing that I want to say, because I think it's really important to say in the context of this conversation, is I want to recognize that our community really benefits from the 25,000 students that we have in our, in our city, and that almost all of them behave well, and are an asset to our community. And I do not want, coming from this council, any feeling that we don't appreciate having the university or the students that make up such a big part of our community, nor that we think every student can be defined by bad behavior at all. We know how many great things they do for our community. So, we're trying to deal with an issue that causes, has caused, and dangers people's health, and safety issues, and, and all of those things. But I certainly think it's important that we recognize the benefit, and, and how much we appreciate and like having all of these students in our community.
Thank you. One more quick, we're going to change the data of the public hearing, I think it would be a good idea to do it, if we can, whilst the U of O is still in session. Because there's a lot of students that you probably want to- I mean, we'll, we'll think about how we want to work that, to make sure that we give it enough time and recognize that.
Thank you so much for all the work that you've, yes-
The agenda shows there's a motion. Are we going to forego that now, or?
Rest of the motion?
Set the public hearing.
I would suggest you not do that. We'll need to do that.
So, we're not going to be doing that right now. Thank you so much for all the work, and we'll take up the next part of this conversation.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you.
So, what I'm going to read into the record right now, is we're going to go into executive session to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties regarding current litigation, or litigation likely to be filed. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602H. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will, we probably won't be returning to open session, because we'll be moving on to our regular council. Okay. Do you want to leave the room to clear?
The room to clear, and make sure that-